Start the playing board meeting. Today is Tuesday, May ninth eighth, May eighth at five ten P M. Alright. So you wanna just start looking at what we wanna look as far as zoning and. Uh so people in the audience may wonder what we're staring at, we're actually looking at the, the T V screen on the wall. Uh reviewing different things, so.
I'm just trying to figure out what's going on here.
I understand.
Okay, I, what I have done is I combined all the ideas that we had put together through emails back and forth. And so if we wanna call them up, I can do that per email, per subject. And then the older stuff which we have, which is the general laws and all that stuff. The more eternal stuff, if you want that, I can go into file manager and pull that up, to include the zoning maps if you want. So whatever you gentlemen decide you wanna see, you let me know and I will pull that up for you. Anything in particular you wanna see first, or?
I think it's quicker if you can see.
Why don't we have a general discussion?
It could.
To see where we wanna go.
That's a good idea.
And. I'll start. In reading a little bit more in this Cannabis Control Commission Municipal Guidelines, they've got a lot of the rules and regs already spelled out. And after our last meeting, I'm leaning more towards Jim's way of thinking in that if they have it, and we've, we, the planning board, the town of Granby has their own bylaws uh regarding establishments, not necessarily marijuana establishments, but retail and where they can be and what they have to do and that kinda stuff. I only see a few myself adaptations that we might wanna consider taking here in Granby.
Yeah, cause like I said, now last time we looked at the zoning areas and we're more towards looking at the business and commercial industrial.
Mm-hmm.
Right, and we know what that areas are in the town.
Okay, with the, Bob, I agree with Bob on that, but Jim brought out a good point at our last meeting. We do have some conflict with the marijuana Massachusetts general laws and our current bylaws. Remember Jim said we should look at our own bylaws to make sure we don't have any conflict, and we do have conflicts. And I have noted them, so when the time comes, however you wanna address it.
Why don't you bring up what you think of the conflicts, I thought they're more.
Well, one of the biggest ones is the fence. Um being as, we have a, on the bylaws, we have a whole section on fences for different zones like that. And whether you wanna talk commercial or you wanna talk private residence, the Massachusetts general law says you have to have a fence and it has to be secured because it is a controlled substance.
Okay.
Okay, but if you look at our bylaws that we currently have today, just a simple scenario, say Jim and I are neighbors. Jim decides that he wants to grow marijuana and I don't. So Jim's gonna put a fence up.
Yes.
To grow marijuana.
Yes.
Under our current guy bylaws, Jim only has to be three feet from my property line.
Okay.
And there's no stipulation anywhere how many feet the marijuana plant has to be away from the fence. So the marijuana plant could grow right up to the fence, go through the regular fencing where kids or anybody can grab the leaves. So as far as the marijuana fence, if you would, if you just wanna break off, leave our whole fencing section alone as is and just state something very simple that if you have to use a fence for your marijuana as required by Massachusetts general law, it must be set back from the property line. You can do fifteen feet, same as a building if you want, whatever thing you wanna pick out. But also you're gonna have to add, how far is the plant gonna be away from the fence itself, so it doesn't come through it, you know what I'm saying?
Can we, I guess, can we dictate what type of fence? Or maybe more.
Well, according to, when I talked with Al, he says the, the laws are very general. He says that you can make them as specific as you want. Just like when Jim was talking last time about the commercial marijuana. They're gonna be in a building, the building's gonna be locked. And that was, that meets the requirements of you cannot see it from a public way and it meets the security. So all commercial products on the zones that we have determined, they'll get a special permit and a site plan through us and they'll be told by our bylaws that any commercial marijuana business, no matter what it is, growing, co- on growing, manufacturing, say making brownies, cutting everything, it all has to be done inside a building that's secured. So anything commercial wise is gonna be done in a building. Then we have to address the private people because the law for the private growing is specifically clear in as much as number one, you cannot see the marijuana being grown from a public way, which could be the street. The simp- is the simplest thing to use.
Right.
Okay, but then we have to look at our other fence bylaws and we don't wanna get them confused with the marijuana requirement of the security fence because some of the fence bylaws are only four feet high.
Well, that's what I'm saying, so can we specify what type of fence? So what can we say, you know, the fence around any marijuana plants must be at a minimum or, or six feet high, it must be a solid fence.
You could specify that because you're meeting a requirement that it, it has to be fenced and, and secure. You don't think so, Jim?
No, you don't wanna do it that way.
Okay.
You, you wanna keep the, the, the bylaws so that it covers, okay, so it's a six foot fence, this particular plant grows eight feet.
Okay.
The bylaw that you're telling me that the state's already got in place states it has to be concealed, it cannot be seen.
That's from a public, that's correct.
So if, you've gotta, if you, if you say you're gonna put a six foot fence in and it's an eight foot plant.
You're in, you're in violation.
You're in violation, so if you're gonna make up any bylaws to cover the residential sideline lots, you wanna use the same kinda language.
I agree.
Cannot be seen, just don't specify the type of fence, don't specify, uh it can't grow through the fence, just specify that it can't be seen.
Well, going back to what Jay said, it has to be secured.
Yes.
So that's not just, just can't be seen, it can't be, it needs to be secured.
For, for homeowner use?
Yes.
Yes.
It has, those are the only requirements that they have for homeowners is, it, it is very clear, I think I put it up last time.
So anything we add is just redundant.
Well, uh well, no, because there's nothing that's saying, so if I'm, if I'm growing it in my backyard, well, you can't see it from the street.
Yep.
So that's fine, but my neighbors on both sides can see it.
That's not.
Plus people have access to it, but if it, and it's not secured, so if I'm growing it outside, it's not secured, I think that's what we're saying. How is that, how are your plants outside secured?
That's the basic issue is how far is your fence gonna be away from your neighbor's property line and how far are the plants gonna be away from that fence, so it doesn't grow through the fence?
So you're telling me that we're gonna, we're gonna require anybody that wants to grow for their own personal use to come before this board for a site plan approval?
No, for, for, they don't come before us for a site plan for residential, that's automatic. Unless we have a bylaw stated what they can do and can't do, the site plan and special permit is only for commercial business.
The law says it has to be secured.
That's right.
And leave that up to each town, city to define what is secured.
Right, and it also leads up to the town where you wanna place the fence and your other things. And I just brought up the fence, cause we got a whole chapter on it, on four, six and eight foot fences in different parts of zones in the town.
Yeah, but that's, that doesn't secure it, I mean, what type, what level of, of security is?
I'm not saying it doesn't, I'm just saying that what a current fence.
Well, it does, you don't have, and I give the same example, is a fence around a pool.
Yeah, it's four feet high.
Right, or, or, you know, it's, it's the access to it.
Right.
So someone doesn't have a general direct access unless you do something to get to it.
Exactly, it's the same analogy.
Right.
So how far do you want the plants away from the fence, so they don't go through it, so they can pick it? And how, and in relation to the property line, if somebody was today was to build a fence, it would be legal for them to build a fence within three feet of their property line. Can we still allow that? The answer is yes. We don't have to mess with that if we don't choose. But that, but then the issue is, if they put the plant directly against the fence, just like anything, it's gonna grow through it. And it is a controlled substance.
So that was my, as I, as I brought up before, is there a reason why we should define what type of fence should be used to have around marijuana plants? If you are growing marijuana plants, this is what needs to occur to.
Well, if it's a normal chain link or any type of wire fence, you've gotta stipulate on how many feet the plants have to be from that fence. If you're talking about a stockade type fence where it's not gonna grow through, now that's a different story.
Right, so that's what I'm saying, so, so if I wanted to, if I wanted to grow marijuana plants in my backyard and say I already have a, a six foot vinyl fence around my whole backyard, then that isn't, should be considered okay.
As long as what Jim said, the tops of the plants do not exceed the top of the fence, then you'd be.
Why?
If you're standing in the street and you can see it.
That's if you're standing in the street.
That's right.
That's like if you're standing in the street.
Yeah, and that's what I thought you were talking about.
No, 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 I'm talking about as far as.
On your deck in your backyard?
Yeah, that doesn't matter, I'm talking about it being secured.
Oh, okay.
So if I have a, a vinyl fence around my whole backyard and I'm growing marijuana plants in my backyard, I can grow anywhere I want in my backyard because they are secured. Going back to what you said, if it's a chain link fence and I'm growing, I'm growing the plant right next to the fence, eventually that plant grows through the fence. Where if you have a solid fence, that's not gonna happen.
I agree, so to me, there's two ways to do it. You either make it a solid fence, or you have to have the plants so many feet away from any fence, so it can't go through.
That would be covered under the, having it secured, if it can grow through a chain link fence, that's not secured. Follow me?
I follow you.
And if a fence.
It's made its way through.
Has to be three feet from a property line, if somebody was, if it was, and I conceivably can see it growing through a chain link fence.
Yeah.
Uh, then the people are trespassing.
Yeah, but it's, it's also.
And, and it's not secure.
It's just, period, it's just not secure.
Right, going back to what Jim said, it's not secure.
It's covered under that, so we don't, we don't need a special bylaw, what type of fence or what kind of fence or how tall it needs to be. If it's not secured, it's not secured.
Mm-hmm.
But I think that's the kinda clarification the chief was looking for in his email to us for tomorrow, to make that stuff clear. So in other words, he'll know how to address it as well.
Well, I thought that he said. I guess I didn't make a note on that. I thought he said that, uh the Marijuana Ad Hoc Committee was gonna handle the security. Am I mistaken at that last meeting?
Yeah, he, 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 he says that that's a subject that has to be handled by the town, is what he said. And that includes all the boards and committees.
But developing, but developing the bylaws or the rules and regulations, they were gonna handle that.
I didn't get that feeling, Bob, but it'd be nice if they did. But just that when our zoning bylaws has fences in it and we're the ones that do the zoning bylaws, the question we should ask ourselves, is the current fence bylaws adequate enough to meet the current Massachusetts general law? It's either a yes or a no answer.
Well, it's an, actually an overlap.
Yeah, yeah, but you know what I mean, Bob.
Yeah.
Because, I mean, using Jim's scenario, they follow the current fence bylines, whether it's a four, six or eight foot fence, depending on what, where they're located, if it's commercial, private or whatever. Then they reverse back to the state requirements where you cannot visibly see it and it has to be secured. And growing through a chain link fence is considered not secure, but is everybody kinda considered that the same way?
Well, that's why I think we might have to clarify.
Well, and I think that's what the chief is looking for, something in the bylaw that would clarify that.
Alright, so what do you wanna put in there, we're gonna, we're gonna beat this to it.
Yeah. In other words, what we're saying is it has to conform to our current fence rules and regulations.
Unless we give it another.
And, and, uh it cannot be visible from a public way. Must be secure.
Yes, sir.
As well as will not be allowed to pass through the fence.
Because that would be considered not secure.
Right.
That's, we have to address that in some manner, the question is how do we wanna address it?
I think Bob just did.
That's what I thought.
Well, I'm just saying, if you wanna use the current fences, you know, I'm just saying, cause I read through them all, and depending what zone you're in, they're four, six or eight feet high.
But what Bob was.
Well, we haven't even decided where we're gonna allow grow facilities yet.
I'm talking private residence, I'm not talking any.
I'm personally not really worried about private residence. We put a four foot fence around it and secure it. Nobody's gonna do it anyway.
Well, I think that the chief is looking for something in writing from the zoning to do it and fences are, are responsibility in the bylaws.
Well, it's a definition, I mean, it, it needs to be secured, so whether that's a fence, whether that's a concrete wall around it.
Oh, I, I, no prob- I'm just bringing it up as a scenario that, you know, it's a controlled substance under the current rules. If I do not have a fence on my property, I or the kids I have could walk up to my neighbor's property.
But at that point, the, the law states it must be secured, and at that point, it's not secured. So, uh, police action can be taken at that point. And going back to what Jim said too, which, which makes sense, if it's a chain link fence and the plant grows through that fence, then it's no longer a secured area.
I.
And it's, it's gone outside, it's a secured contained area.
Right, I, I agree, and the only thing I'm saying is do we wanna put a stipulation in how close it can be to the fence to make sure nobody, it'll always be secure. If we don't wanna do it, well, hey, that's fine. If we do wanna do it, then we do it now versus having problems later. Or maybe we can just draft up what, what Jim says.
Yeah, but see, you know, when someone, we say three feet, someone grows a plant, the plant grows over three feet and it goes over the fence.
Right.
So why, I mean, why put in, I guess, why attach a, a number to it? It'll just leave it, if it's, if it grows outside the fence, it's no longer secured. So if other people have access to it, then it's not, it's not secured.
And maybe all we need is a statement under our bylaw for fences just stating that any fence that is securing marijuana, the marijuana will be considered unsecure if it protrudes the fence.
Must be contained within fence limits.
Something like that, you know.
Yeah.
A, a simple statement like that, it's clear that it can't go through the fence.
Yeah. Okay, so must be contained within the, the fence limits, limits of the fence or whatever. And this is gonna be both for private?
Period.
Okay, we're not talking about, uh, commercial grow?
No.
No, commercial, we've already stated is gonna be all indoor buildings, any commercial growth. It'll be all done indoors, out of sight, out of mind and locked, so this is just private.
So basically.
I don't know if I'd even say fence, I'd say contained area.
Oh, well, what I put up there is paragraph five point nine eight on fences.
Read it.
Okay, applicability, fences, walls or any other enclosure shall be considered accessory structures and shall be permitted within the required front side rear yards subject to the conditions and requirements of section five point nine eight dot one and five point nine eight dot six. Five eight point two, the fence height, A, in all zones. Fences or other enclosures shall not exceed four feet in height along the front line and that portion of the side lot lines between the front line and the minimum front setback line in all zoning districts. So that's what I'm saying, we possibly could have a conflict within our bylaws and the security of the fence if they're saying right there, shall not exceed four feet.
But why? What, what's the conflict?
So we're gonna allow anybody that's growing to have a larger fence just because they're growing.
You have to have it secure?
We're gonna change our bylaw for that.
But that's not saying it's secure, and I go back to
Right.
Someone has a, a fence around the pool, there's a certain requirement, that's it. If someone has a six foot fence around the pool, that's fine too. Uh, I, I think it's, it's, that's the requirement that we're having, i- it would say four feet, why, it's, it's secured, a fence around it is secured.
It lies the plants do not exceed four feet invisible from a public way.
Well, that's, that's totally different, we're talking about this secu- the, how it's being secured. The fence has nothing, the fence has nothing to do with it.
Well, you asked me to read it, so I read it from something.
No, 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 but I'm saying the fence has nothing to do with it as, as far as visibility from the street. Because with the fence that we're talking about, uh, secu- it has to be secured because of a fence.
Marijuana has to be secured by a fence and law.
So if someone has a, a four foot fence and they have a six foot marijuana plant, but you can't see it from the street.
Then it's legal.
It's fine, if you can't see it from the street, well, then there's a problem, then that, then there's different, you know, there's, there's a law against that.
I agree entirely with you said, but you've also made another statement that as a resident, you wouldn't like to see marijuana being grown in your neighbor's yard as well.
No, but I mean, it would do, to what extent, do you put a six foot fence up, a eight foot fence, you know, it's, it's that's where the plant grows where it grows.
Be that as it may, that you may not wanna see it in your neighbor's yard, you've got no control over it with the rules and rights that have been handed forth by the state.
That is.
That says that you can apparently now legally grow it.
That is a hundred percent correct unless you had a bylaw that said the fence had to be higher or a certain height. Cause like I said, we got a whole bunch of it here, on the setbacks of the fences, the heights of the fences, residential zones, like in all residential's districts, fences and other enclosures shall not exceed six feet in height along the portion of the side lot between the minimum yard setback line and the rear lot line and line in the rear of.
I don't know, I don't know the average height of a marijuana plant, so I don't know what.
I have no idea, I never grown it.
What point they grow and they consider to be, where they can be harvested, I don't know.
I don't know, I'm just reading for residential, the next statement is for business and industrial districts, which really would have no play if they gotta have an, an inside enclosure, as we've stated. When we get to that part, so the only thing we're looking for is a fence is for private, which would be residential. And there's, and there's two things, there's four foot fence in the front, six foot fence in the side, three foot from the property line or your setback.
I believe the bylaws as they are, it's gotta be secured, period.
Private grow, fence must be secured and, uh.
No, the, the, the.
It must be contained.
Contained, it's a, secure, they don't, they could put it in a building, they could put it in a greenhouse, they could, they could put a, a six foot or an eight foot fence in the middle of their property.
Right.
That's, that's a ten by ten area.
To go to Jimmy, what Jim's saying is that I have a greenhouse in my backyard, I grow the plants inside there, I don't have the fence around there.
It's secure.
Well, that's, I think we just leave that secured. And when, you know, if it becomes an issue, well, how is your, I, I think it's up to the homeowner to demonstrate how that plant is secured.
So basically what I'm getting at this, we, we only have to do two things to our current bylaws. One, for the business and industrial districts, we have to have a statement that says any commercial marijuana growth will be required, be done inside in a, a building or enclosure, whatever you wanna call it, and it must be locked for security, and that'll take care of commercial and industrial. Is that what we're looking at for that one? Clear and cut?
Mm-hmm.
I, I believe so.
Okay, then the second.
Any, any, I don't see anybody feeling different?
Must be in a secured building.
Yep.
Based, structure.
When the plants are not visible from the public way, if you wanna add that.
Any commercial growing, we, we talked about it, any commercial growing needed to be done in a secure structure.
Mm-hmm.
Indoor growing only.
Mm-hmm, and any application within any of the, the business or the industrial district require a special permit by the planning board and site plan approval. Those are the only requirements for commercial.
Um, much. Stay with that thought.
Okay, we can stay there.
Um. Let's, let's, hang on, hold your thought for a minute.
Okay.
Are we done with the residential and we're done with the fencing?
If the only thing that we're going to add to the residential is it must be secured, then I would say we're done.
So residential for, for personal use, we're complete with that?
As long as we add a statement that the plants must be secured.
It's in the, it's in the, the state bylaw?
It's in the state bylaw that it must be fenced and must be secured.
Okay, so.
And we're interpreting, security means that nobody could reach and put it through the.
Then it's not secure.
Right, that's what I'm saying, so that, that's the clarity I think they're looking for.
Alright, so, so now Bob, you wanted to, you wanted to go to, to what now, you wanna go to indoor growing, commercial growing?
Yeah, the commercial grow, we need site plan approval and a special permit as well as a security plan. Because I don't think we spell out site plan approval as a security plan or within site plan.
That, that goes under the building district and the licensing for that, for that facility. All, all, the only thing that's on our, in our purview is where it can be located. Um, and that again, it's, it's what we propose to the town, that work, what zoning is, will it be allowed in? Whether it's indoor or outdoor. And then the, the site plan itself, as far as, uh, vehicles coming and going, just like we would any other.
Mm-hmm.
Any other industry that we would, we would look at, making sure they had, you know, um, stormwater management, you know, curb cuts.
A general site plan.
General, yeah, general site plan, cause every, because once it's inside that building, it's regulated by, by, uh, building code and, and state bylaws, Mass General Law.
Makes sense.
Just like, just like you mentioned before about what do they do with the byproduct or the, this, the.
The waste.
The waste, that'll all be, I'm sure it's all based on how they're licensed and what their requirements are in order to.
Right, that's already set up.
Yeah.
Yeah.
So if we, if we allow a growth facility, a manufacturing growth facility in the industrial or in, uh.
Business.
Or in the, um, uh, the overlay, a new Lego road where there's a, um, a business park overlay. If those are the only two locations, then you know, then it's just, everything, it, it, it takes us out of it, not that we're looking to get out of anything, but if the town votes to say it can only be done inside, then I don't know what, what we can put on it other than what goes on around it, site plan itself.
Right, cause everything else is gonna fall to Mass General Law as far as growing it and.
Correct.
Transporting it and all that stuff.
And by doing the special permit, it requires a public hearing where anybody living next door to it has a come, chance to come in and voice their opinion. Chance to come in and voice their opinion.
Correct.
Okay.
So are we saying that we, are we gonna going to uh recommend that we only lo- allow it? A growth facility, a commercial growth facility in the industrial park and. And well, the industrial zone area and the, I think it's called the business park overlay on New Lobo Road. Is that the recommendation?
I wouldn't have a problem with that.
Well, I'll ask you this, can they have a retail store in those districts too? Because they're gonna probably wanna try and put their retail store on the one that's allowed in town. With the same area or location that they're growing it in the back.
Well, I would think the retail stores are, that that's commercial and the business overlay.
I'm saying, that's that's fine, as long as it all fits, I'm fine with it, that's why I just, I'd rather ask the question now than. Than us get bagged later, that's all.
Yeah. I don't think that they can be owned by the same entity though.
Uh yeah, remember you read, and we both pointed out, under the registered medical dispensary, they have to grow their own.
No, no, I mean for retail.
Well, that's retail. A registered medical dispensary is a business.
Right, but for retail, for a recreational, I should say. I don't think that they can be owned, that a growth facility can be owned by the same entity that owns.
The retail store.
The retail store.
Yeah, I didn't see that, if it's in there, I missed it.
So in a in our industrial zone, just to give you for retail, in our industrial zone. By special permit, many of these places are allowed. Retail stores, bank, office buildings, services, restaurant and tavern. Fast food establishment establishments, no. Why that's, why there's two of them in there, it's beyond me. Special permit. So most all retail. Other, and for some reason, which I don't know why. Fast food establishments are not allowed in the industrial area. So if they wanted to put a retail in there, they could.
But only with site plan approval? Not special permit, huh?
Is that something we wanna add to the table, put a special permit in with the site plan approval?
Well, could you look at it if you uh if you're doing a site plan approval, that you're ba- and you okay the site plan. As drawn or amended and everything else, then you're basically giving site plan approval.
Yeah, well, it's what Ja- Jay's referring to, it means it's not allowed unless it's by special permit.
I said, I said, you wanna add a special permit to the site plan approval, like we said.
Should be allowed, but it just should be allowed with a site plan approval, it's on a, it's not in a residential area. Typically, you'd you'd see less of that in an industrial area. Special permit because it's, you want it allowed, you want, it's it's a business, you want businesses in the business zone.
I thought when we had talked before, we wanna make sure that any marijuana commercial entity had a special permit.
That's up to the board, I don't, it's it's a it's a inside grow facility.
It has to have site plan approval.
It really has nothing to do with us, as as far as we're concerned, it's just a building going on a. And it's and it's a, it's an allowed function of the state, it's.
Don't we drop in the special permit requirement from a commercial business then?
Well, yeah, but what what do we get from them having a special permit anyways?
Biggest thing is you get a hearing where anybody wants to say anything, they come in, we have to hold a hearing and address it from there.
But by law, they're allowed to have it there, zoning allows it, the state allows it. Would you say no, you can't do it?
Unless the town decides to vote and ban it, the answer to your question is yes.
Now, now. So so if we're clear on that, we're, then we move on to retail in a business district. There, I think you would want special permit, site plan approval.
In a general business area.
In the general business area, because there there's too many, there's too many areas that could be conflicts, there's, there's um. There's a, there's a lot of other issues.
Right, that can come up.
Like like Child's First there is an example, it's located in general business. And if we didn't have stipulations for a special permit in there, we could have issues. So in other words, for all commercial growth. Or excuse me, all commercial operations. In the general business area requires a special permit and site plan approval. All commercial marijuana business in the industrial area requires site plan approval only. I'm just spelling it out the way we died.
We'll go back there.
Okay. Any commercial marijuana operation, and that can include recreational and medical altogether. We just call it all commercial, be the easiest way to do it, instead of doing separate laws for separate ones. Any commercial marijuana business done in the general business zoned area. Requires a special permit and a site plan approval, because there's so many different entities in there, like Jim said. Now, if we move to the industrial park. They would. Only require site plan approval for commercial marijuana operations in the industrial.
Are you talking about growing, an operation considered to be a retail store?
Can be considered all of the above, that's why they give us all the lists of things to address, and that's why I'm spelling it out. So you can look at it, cause you remember, we gotta talk the selling, the growing, the transportation. The manufacturing, if they're gonna make soup out of it, like brownies, cookies, whatever.
I think so, I think uh we could probably check into it more, but I think the state talks about um transportation, how it's transported.
Uh not to a whole degree in that brochure we got.
We we don't have any jurisdiction over that.
Yeah, I was gonna say, what does that, how does that fall under us? You're gonna see placards on trucks not with a marijuana leaf.
Well, no, there's cer- there's cer- there's certainly requirements you do, because if I'm traveling with ten pounds of marijuana in my car, that's illegal. Unless I'm a la- a license to transport it from place point A to point B. Alright, so that's what we're gonna go with, I mean.
So who's gonna be the person to brief the marijuana committee tomorrow?
You.
What time is that?
Six.
Is it six, I didn't.
At the senior center.
Senior center, yes.
Is the board basically saying we're done for the evening?
Well, I think we, to be honest with all of this, we.
I don't know.
We're gonna be in agreement, we should make a motion. If this is what we're gonna do and repeat it out.
But what else are we, so we have that, that's the commercial and residential.
We need commercial, residential and industrial.
We have not, correct me if I'm wrong, we have not limited. Or made a proposed limit of the um the number of grow facilities.
No, we have not.
And do we do something such as. The recreational retail marijuana stores where we can limit, let's say, because there's only two liquor licenses in Grand B.
One store.
One store.
Right, do we do the same thing?
Quite frankly, if they've got a, if they wanna put up a dozen.
Buildings.
Buildings out on.
Okay.
I think the town would be more than happy to take the tax out of that.
Do we wanna say that uh grow facilities have to be certain distance from private public. Education facilities, as well as the possible consideration of licensed state cares?
That's a good point, because it doesn't state that in the.
What does the state, the state, the state refer anything as far as?
No, it only refers to retail stores.
Nothing about commercial growth?
No, nothing about the commercial growth. But again, if it's gonna be inside and secured, does it really matter a whole lot?
Well, that could be why the state looks at it that way, because it's it's enclosed, it's being manufactured.
Well, but the state doesn't specify that it has to be.
State does not specify it has to be.
Has to be what?
Has to be in a building.
No, we already did, so that.
We are specified, the state does not specify.
Can you pull up the zoning maps?
Sure.
Though the state law specified that it be inside a closed b- enclosed building.
Which one do you want, Jim, New Lobo Road, East State Street?
Let's start with New Lobo. Okay, so the 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 red hashed area, can you zoom in on that, so we can see the the um. Yeah, scroll down now, so we can definitely.
And here's your, on the side, the.
Business park overlay.
Okay. So that's the only place we're gonna allow it, other than the industrial.
Is the business park overlay.
Overlay, not not in GB.
Right.
Business park overlay.
And that's what we should put down, is business park overlay district.
Yeah.
Requires site plan approval.
And that's for the grow facilities.
That would be for anything.
Well, grow, yeah, but uh the retail, aren't we requiring in the general business area, we're requiring a special permit.
Because of the other businesses in there.
That'll be covered, it'd be, so in other words, when we look across the.
The re- yes, the retail, yeah.
The retail, you'll see grow facility. Not allowed, not allowed, industrial, it's allowed, retail, allowed in general business, allowed in industrial. Sp- uh only special permit, or you can put special permit and site plan approval for a grow faci- uh for a retail.
We don't have uh site plan approval? We must have site plan approval for retail.
We we said.
Maybe I must have misunderstood.
Yeah, all retails have site.
Yeah.
What I'm saying, you can, you can add.
Maybe one of the boxes.
Special permit, site plan approval if you want to. In other words, it it it's allowed in GB. And it's allowed in the, it'll, we're gonna propose that it's allowed in the uh uh. The overlay.
General business overlay, or.
Business car.
Business park overlay.
Business park overlay. Because there may be a a grow facility there. But if, so if it's if it's just a grow facility, all they need is a a site plan approval. But if it's a grow facility and or a standalone retail, it needs site plan approval. Sep- special permit and site plan.
Okay.
Okay, on the business park district overlay here, does it say anything about retail stores? And make sure that's requirement is in there?
It it's in there. Right. See, when you look at retail and services.
Right.
You look at all these.
Right, then you look at.
Down here, and it's site plan approval only, so what you'll see is uh a, you'll see, you'll see uh. Dispensary or whatever you wanna call it, and then you'll look across and you'll see.
But what I'm saying is, on retail store, that's could be medical or recreational, if I went across.
Well, we're gonna, we're we're not gonna call it a retail store, we're gonna call it, there there's a retail store, there's a bank, there's an office, there's a. We're gonna call out.
Specific marijuana.
Specifically, and then.
Okay.
Plug in this.
Okay.
Follow me?
To have the check that's calling.
That's why I'm asking, because if we're just gonna use the retail store, they wouldn't need a special permit.
They would need a special permit, and it would be allowed in other areas, it would be allowed in the uh the the common.
Yeah, village center.
So it's a marijuana retail se- store, marijuana commercial growth. And you'll go across, but you'll see what applies, what doesn't apply, just like everything else does.
And then we have to do the same thing for residential as far as put in and be secured? Or you're gonna let the chief fight for himself?
Yeah, I think, I don't think we wanna get involved in that, I don't.
Cause I know.
Can't police it, it's it's not, they don't need a permit to to grow it, so how do you? If a neighbor complains, then you you can go, you can refer, if a neighbor complains or somebody complains, my kid's getting into his.
Yeah.
His uh his grow garden there, his garden, then the neighbor can complain to the, you know, and. It's gotta be secured.
And I think that's the way it should, should be explained tomorrow night, so the chief understands that. In a residential district, as long as you can't see it from a public way, it's up to the, I'll call it the homeowner. If he's growing the marijuana, he's required by Massachusetts law to sec- uh fence it off and secure. And that means, and our definition of secure means all the marijuana stays inside the fence.
No, i- i- it needs to be secured by law, so how is it secured? Well, like I said, I can have a greenhouse in my backyard.
Right.
I don't need a fence around it, law has a door and it's secured.
Could be secured by three German shepherds.
Right.
I'm just saying, this is the what they're gonna want tomorrow night, so I'm just saying, if we spell it out the way we want it, then.
I mean, we can always take a a recommendation from the chief of what he's looking for. But at this point, what, I mean, what can we possibly do unless we're?
Well, that's just, how how are we gonna set anything?
Right.
Well, you, to the bylaws, and the voters have to approve them, of course.
Well, what bylaw, again, it's would say it must be secured, well, give a definition of what's secured. It's not, I mean, we don't wanna put on, I don't know if we wanna put on that road. You know, it leaves a general statement, it's secured, that's us, I too, maybe the chief is thinking, gee, you know, it's that, it's that gray area. So now I gotta say, well, it's not, it, I'm saying it's not secured, well, I'm saying it is, well, I'll see you in court then. Cause you have nothing that tells me what's secured is.
Well, like Jim has said many times, and I've echoed what Jim has said, this is a living, breathing, growing.
Right.
Thing that as situations arise, they will have to be addressed.
Well, yeah, but then.
No pun, growing, yeah.
But then we all know that if somebody's out there, they're gonna be preexisting, so. If a bylaw is changed, people who have started already don't have to abide by it, they have to abide by the bylaw, that was an effect.
The good thing is, is we can.
Ah, not that plant's gone, as soon as a new plant starts, it's different.
I wouldn't say if a new plant starts, I mean, if it's a site, it's a site.
In other words, winter time, springtime starts, new.
New plants.
I don't think.
That's why, that's why a zoning bylaw doesn't cover it, that's why a a a law.
Covers it.
Covers it from a, from a uh law enforcement, you know, they can change it, you know, you can't say, well, I've been doing it. Well, law says you can't do it anymore, so it's not a bylaw, it's not a dumb bylaw.
Right, it's, I I think, I guess, I think the only thing the chief, I think, and I know I could be wrong, but I think the only thing he's looking for is to. Kinda give some kinda definition as to what is considered secured, so, you know, go to someone's house. Well, I have uh, I don't know, like you said, Jim, I got German shepherds out there, that's who's who's going in my backyard, that's secured. Well, we don't consider conserv- uh secured unless you have a fence, but where does it say that?
It does say that in Massachusetts law.
It has a fence.
Has to have a fence and be secured.
Then why are we, why are we debating this?
Because we have a fence bylaw, and I'm saying.
We have a fence bylaw that that addresses border fences, property line fences.
Yes.
It doesn't address.
Marijuana fence.
That particular fence does not address fences around pools, or fences around uh uh power.
State laws do. So state law says you must have a fence around it, then you have to have a fence around it, that's it. Is it secured, like, you know, we came up earlier, talking about, well, if it's growing through the the chain link fence, fence, it's really not secured, is it? If I if I walk in by, I can have access to it, then it's not secured.
It's almost like saying, you can do it, the state says you can do it, but we're saying you can only do it by special permit. And the special permit says, we want you to have X, Y and Z, we don't wanna do that.
Right. You know, if we if we wanna look at another analogy, and I'm not sure if I'm really gonna be able to make my point. This whole personal residential property, personal use, it's no different than having a picnic. Out in your backyard with coolers filled filled with beer and wine. Out in your backyard with coolers fill- filled with beer and wine, that is accessible to underage. People, where then it's illegal for them to to possess.
Right.
Yeah, but I I I think the difference there is, the marijuana will be there twenty-four seven, the coolers won't.
Right, I I was trying to think, if you had an outside, well, whatever.
No, I I see that, I see, I do understand where you're going, boy, that's right. Where, you know what, in my backyard, I left a a cooler out there full of beer and alcohol.
Overnight.
I just left it there, didn't know anything about it.
Yeah.
People came by, came through my yard and had access to it, someone got uh very sick, or someone died from it, or whatever. Well, i- is there, can I be held responsible?
Or if you have a dorm refrigerator on your back deck, next to your hot tub or something, you know.
I mean, it's different things that we can always look at, but like I said, I think as far as the state's saying, it needs to be secured by a fence. So it has to be secured by a fence. And if, you know, and if it goes down the road, I think things get difficult, then uh we can petition the state to make a better laws. And so, we're not alone in this, it's.
No, and that's why we looked at the other zoning.
Right, and I don't think anybody, I haven't seen anybody have anything pertaining to that.
No, because I think, because of the timeline, we're actually ahead of them. Because they're waiting on finding a valid planning commission, or they're outright banning this stuff.
Right, so I think if, I think.
Admit it, that's what they end up happening.
Right.
We may be going through all this or nothing, if uh if the first uh warrant article is to ban. I believe it was just said, gotta clear my mind here, but. Unlimited number of grow facilities in the business park overlay?
Yeah, I think the state, what does, what does the state say about that, Ken?
They have a bunch of different stuff.
We, we've already got limits on both of the sides here.
I, that's just what I was thinking.
Uh, oh, are you talking about the different tiers of growing?
Yes, I am.
Okay, the different, they have different tiers, let me see if I can find that for you.
It'd be on page six of that. Of the Cannabis Control Commission Municipal Guidance.
Yeah, I think in here, just trying to think, what chapter, was it ninety-four C or something like that?
Let me see if I can find that here for you.
I think it was ninety-four C.
Controlled Substance Act.
Oh, if you go to one of them, there's, it's like seventy-seven pages. I don't. No, they wouldn't have given this a law, because it's only a municipal guidance handout, this wouldn't have a law on them. Stand reason?
Yep.
Section thirteen. This is what the chief gave me, that I forward to you guys.
Yeah, it's penalties and.
Yeah, but see, this is what they, their penalties, and they state, like uh. Restrictions on personnel cultivation, no person shall cultivate or process marijuana plants. Pursuant to section eight of this chapter, if the plants are visible from a public place. Without the use of binoculars, aircraft, or other aids. Or cultivate or process marijuana plants outside of an area that is equipped. With a lock or other security device. A person who violates this subsection shall be punished by a civil penalty of not more than three hundred dollars. In forfeiture of the marijuana, but shall not be subject to any other forms of criminal. Punishment and disqualification, disqualification solely for this conduct. So right there is saying that a public person can grow it, if they. Are not visible from a public place, and equipped with a lock or other security device.
Yeah, we went over all this, that's what we just came up with this.
I know, well, you a- you asked me to call it up, I called it up, I just had to find which section it was in.
The other thing is, you go to.
I think we're talking about as far as growing, um, I mean, is there, is there the different tier levels?
Oh, here's, here's. Here's an example of how our bylaws already cover certain questions that have come up, for instance, uh waste disposal. Waste disposal shall follow the state and town border health regulations, storage uh of waste and waste facilities shall, shall be screened from view. From public ways and neighbor, appropriate provision shall be made, made for for disposal of trucks, you know. So there's already stuff built into this to cover anything that may come up, not just what we've gotten listed.
The good, the good thing is, is that the planning board was proactive in redoing their bylaws back in two thousand fourteen.
Yes.
But again, like we we've, we say time and time again, it's, it's a living document, and you've gotta s- you've gotta make adjustments as you go.
Right.
As you feel necessary.
And there's, and there's only one person here that we can thank for that, and that's you, Jim. None of us are on the board then. Do we wanna talk some about, uh, do we stick with the state's guid- guidance? Five hundred feet from a private public.
Yeah, I don't wanna go.
School facility. I don't think you wanna go any closer.
I don't wanna go any closer.
Okay, uh, some communities say it has to be, some community. Uh draft bylaws say that it has to be measured straight line, property line to structure. Uh, do we wanna get that involved? Five hundred feet's quite a distance. And also, do we wanna include? Let's see how East Hampton has it worded here, um. Something regarding daycares. And.
I thought we looked at the state law, and state laws talked about daycares, isn't it?
It says, all public and private schools, including daycares, I think it was worth something.
We did look that up, cause we had that question.
Yeah, we had posted it up, it was up, I think it's in the same thing right now, this is your tiers that you were looking for, but.
Yeah.
Right, the square footage, correct.
Okay, do you need that anymore?
Jim, that's what they're, y- you you uh.
Can go up to a thousand eleven.
Licensed by tier.
Right, so going back to what you're saying before, so are we gonna allow four tier eleven facilities?
Well, there's eleven tiers.
No, because our bylaws don't allow structures that size anywhere.
Not even without a special permit in areas from the zoning board of appeals?
Well, I'm double checking on that right now.
Well, yeah, they could do that.
Yeah, that's why I I brought it up.
But again, it would only be allowed in an industrial or in a business park. It would not be allowed, um, say behind uh several. They wanted to put a sp- a grow facility there of any size.
I would imagine there's only be certain areas they're gonna wanna do that, would be an area where they have access to. I think more just well water, I would imagine it's gonna take a lot, a lot of water in them.
It's gonna take a lot of heat and light.
A lot of, yeah, right.
Hmm, this recital here doesn't have the five hundred foot, must be another document that we read.
Uh, we did read it somewhere. I think the chief had during his presentation file too. I don't, yeah, I think I remember when the chief, when the chief did his presentation, it was in there.
Yeah, I'm pretty sure that's where it was too.
Five hundred feet.
We got a copy of his presentation anyway.
He probably emailed it to us. So we're saying we know, we're not gonna limit anything, so. What are you looking at, bud?
I'm looking, I, and I saw it earlier, but now I'm trying to find it, and I can't, how uh. I don't believe they say anything in the state, the state guidance form about daycares.
See, I thought they did, again, I could be wrong, but I think they're killing with the question, what's considered daycare? Is a daycare at my house considered daycare?
Right.
If I'm, um, but then we kinda say, well, it doesn't matter, cause it's not gonna be allowed in residence anyways, so, doesn't matter.
Well, how is Alphabet Soup and uh Children's First? I wonder if they're licensed as some sort of an educational facility.
I believe.
I think they have to.
I think they, uh, well, I think Children's First has some type of education built into their.
Besides that, they're, they're protected under some sort of, uh, remember we dealt with the other one? By right, they can put those. They can put them anywhere, basically.
Oh, when Children's First was doing the addition?
Yep.
Because they were looked at as like schools, and those are.
Yeah.
Okay.
By right.
Such as East Hampton, uh. No cannabis establishment should be located within three hundred and fifty feet of a pre-existing public or private school. Providing education in in kindergarten or any grades one through twelve, uh. They do not address.
Okay. Business park overlay district, general requirements, four point five point two. D shall have a maximum building area sixty thousand square feet.
I'm sorry, send that again, please.
A maximum building area of sixty thousand square feet.
Well, acre and a half, basically, then.
Mm-hmm.
But that's in a business park.
Right, so do you wanna limit that to?
Well, it's already limited.
Well, it's limited to sixty thousand square feet.
Right.
But you can have five sixty thousand square foot buildings.
I agree with that.
That is if we don't limit.
You know, you can't have five, you can only have one.
Why?
Somebody else can have another one.
That's what I'm saying, that's what I'm saying.
That's why if we.
I didn't want the different bands.
Go ahead, man, I'm sorry.
It, that's why if we limit it to fifty percent of the package store licenses, liquor. Package store liquor licenses, then there would only be one in town.
Why would we wanna do that, though?
I don't know, I'm just throwing it out there, and, you know, why would we wanna ju- do just one retail establishment?
Well, that's all we're allowed by law.
Right.
That's why.
That isn't how I read it.
Yeah, you're allowed twenty percent, you take the number of liquor licenses you have in your town. Multiply that by twenty percent, and that's the maximum number of uh commercial or retail.
I thought that the twenty percent was the minimum number.
No, that's the maximum.
Yeah, it's maximum, is it, yeah, I'm pretty sure.
And then, because twenty percent of two is less than one, you have to allow a minimum of one.
Right.
I mean, I'm, I'm throwing it out there, but I, if they wanted, if if that overlay district for the business parks, someone wanted to come in there and put.
Yeah, really, what would it hurt, be some tax, be some revenue?
But are there some, there's some houses out there?
You know, we're all saying that, and we don't live in that area.
Well, that's what I'm saying, there's some houses out in that area too. And I think just being respectful of that, that we want three fifty thousand square.
Well, that's why I was, it's saying to the fact that maybe we should add special permit to the site plan approval. Because that'll kick off a hearing and they'll have a right to say something, if we don't have special permit, we just would site plan approval.
But again, it's people can say what they wish, but if it's, they're allowed to have it there, they're allowed to have it there, we can't. If our, if our bylaws say, yes, you're allowed to have it there, we can't say, no, you can't have it.
Well, the bylaws are allowed to have solar everywhere too, but we add restrictions to the special permit based upon the people that show up.
That's because a lot of those go in residential areas.
Right.
This is only gonna be allowed in a, a business park.
Right, I understand what you're saying.
And, and if you look at the business park, um, um, definition and 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 the overlay, they've already got setbacks. From property lines and residential and so on and so forth, so.
But from New Leather Road, as they've been stating, there's already houses within the business park overlay.
I'm not opposed to a, to a number, or do I need a number, I don't think we're gonna end up with five or three, you know. Of all these different areas and cities and towns that have. Reality is, there's a lot more to offer than we do as far as growing it and stuff like that, buildings are already set up and stuff like that, and. You know, buildings are already built and things they can use, and versus coming in and kinda.
Right, I I think they're gonna use up all those buildings that are built that are not being used elsewhere in other towns before they even consider coming here. Whether it's Springfield, Hoeyoke, Chickapie, or whatever.
Right, there's a lot of.
Unused buildings.
Oversized, commercial buildings that could be accessible for that type of business.
Right.
Yes.
Regarding the, we're gonna stick to the five hundred feet, I guess we've decided.
Well, I, anyway, I mean, I, I want, I mean, I want it to stay five hundred feet, unless, I mean, someone feels something different, I'd be glad to put to a low.
I I would say minimum five hundred feet, and leave it like that in case the law changes. If you put an exact number in there, then you're absolute.
The town of Grafton discusses educational facilities. Um, the proposed uses, meaning marijuana facilities. Shall not be located within five hundred feet of the following, as measured from the building and or area actively used. Uh. A public or private elementary school, middle school, secondary school, preparatory school. Licensed daycare center, and any other facility in which children commonly congregate. In an organized, ongoing, formal basis, or owned and operated as part of a campus. Or any private or public institution of higher learning.
Okay, I'm just gonna throw this out based upon what you just said, on Route two oh two, we have that, what, Boy Scouts of America, Cub Scouts of America building?
Oh, no, no, that's a private entity, that's a, the.
But you did, but you just said wherever kids conjugate and stuff like that, on what you just read.
Well, this is, this is Grafton.
Right, I understand that, and you were giving it as an example.
Right.
And I'm just saying, based upon what it said right there, that would control.
And I'm just saying, based upon what it said right there, that would control the Boy Scout, Cub Scout. Area in Granby if that was in our bylaws, is all I'm saying, because wherever kids conjugate.
In an organized, ongoing, formal basis, I, I mean that to be a scheduled.
Well, don't they have schedules?
Basically, what they're talking about is. You don't wanna buy a ballpark or a playground, you know, those types of, that's what they're, I think that's what they're leaning towards.
But where I was really going with this was, uh, public, private, elementary school, middle school, secondary school. Prep school, licensed daycare center. So here they spell out licensed daycare center in Grafton. Belcher Towns' proposed bylaw says, no marijuana establishment should be located within two hundred feet. Of any building housing a childcare center. Or an elementary, middle to, middle, preparatory vocation or high school.
Well, see, they've got, they've got schools right in the middle of their business parks.
Right, but childcare center. I don't know what the definition of childcare center is in licensed daycare.
Well, licensed daycare would, could be defined by Kathy Kelly Regan, because. There's an ongoing issue with one of them right now, which we're gonna get at one of our next two meetings, that's the only reason I know about it. And, um, the lady that's involved in that one licenses herself every couple of years. She's in a condominium, I guess the condominium association doesn't want her to continue. But that's, she's been there, so, as long as she keeps up her license as far as the town is concerned, she can stay there. It's the condo association's problem, not the town's problem.
Regardless, do we, do we wanna con- consider any verbiage about daycare centers?
Yes.
We do, okay.
I, I do, cause I think, and unless someone, if someone feels different, please speak up. I have no problem, because it's, it's kids first.
Cause I don't think that, I honestly, and I, I may be entirely wrong, uh. Everybody wants to correct me, I don't think it mentions daycare services in the state.
We can put it in there, no problem, but it, it says public and private.
That's Grafton.
But it's Grafton, but they're always stipulating it, so I'm wondering, but the chief did, I remember the chief brought it up, I believe he brought it up. Yeah, I said public and or private. So. I don't remember where it was. I think we, we really should do too at a point is that after we decide, uh, what we're recommending for bylaw changes. And actually see if we could actually put a business somewhere.
Put a what somewhere?
Put a business. Put a business somewhere.
See if something will fit.
Yes, yeah, to be, I mean, we're coming with all these things, you know, are we just basically. Blocking everybody out. Put together and so, based on all the, your bylaws, we can't put anywhere, so.
Well, honestly, I see right from the South Adley line on Route two oh two up to. Well, the general business area, wherever the village park over.
That's not an overlay, the business, the business, general business got expen- extended to the, the common village.
Right, which is, but I, I see anywhere along the two oh two corridor. That's something, you know, up until the center of town, the center district or whatever it's called, Village Center District. Uh, where it's still general business, that one could go. I mean, you have, yes, you do, you do have the daycare, the Alphabet Soup. You also have Children's First, but if we're gonna say fi- stay five hundred feet away from. Children's First, that just brings you down to Route two oh two, you know?
Well, they're not act.
Well, this says public library too.
Yeah, that does too, yeah, I didn't even bring that up.
There was one document.
That's the one on Pleasant Street, correct?
Children's First is on Pleasant Street.
That's not even.
Right, but it's still a, a, some sort of a school.
But we're only allowing it in the business district.
Right, so. But five hundred feet, I mean, if, let's say they were right on the edge.
Which, they're pretty fairly close to it.
Yeah.
They gotta stay within.
And I, and I do like if, if Bill, uh, Barbara, uh, it does say public library or a playground or park. Which I agree with, I mean, I don't think. Yeah, a perfect example you could pick out, uh, well, no. I was thinking DuFrage Park, but that, that's professional area and we're not allowing it up there, so that wouldn't count, that's right. So I'm just, I'm just saying that after we get it all said and done, I mean, we should actually say, okay, yes, you can put one in these areas.
Like the Chateau, there'd be, there'd be there, um.
Well, the daycare, right, the daycare right around, where's the, uh, there's a daycare right where the old post office used to be.
That is correct.
Yes.
Any of the, the property, uh. East of Finn's Hill.
Yeah, I mean, I'm fine with it, I just think that we do our.
I don't think we've shut it out, we just.
Yeah, just make sure that, yes, it is feasible, uh, it is a, a small section, but yes, it is feasible.
So we're gonna include, uh, daycares?
Yeah, absolutely.
Okay. And we're just gonna say daycares, or we're gonna say licensed daycare? Because somebody by right could say, well, kind of, I live in the, in the GB area. And I have two kids and my sister brings her kid over and I watch them during the day.
That's good.
Well, I'm, I'm sorry, that's not necessarily a licensed daycare. And you can't use this or that premise as a stopping block.
Yeah, it should be a licensed facility.
It's a license, I think it says that right here, and I like.
It does.
I like their, the way theirs is, uh, worded too, a public or private elementary school, middle school, secondary school.
See, this is Belcher Towns' first. That's why I have kind of a problem with that one.
Any building housing cha- a childcare center or elementary. Well, that's one of their bylaws. Define what a housing.
Does the state, does the state say anything about it?
I think it says daycare.
The state?
I think the state just says public and private schools.
I believe K through twelve.
Yeah, it's definitely K through twelve. Yes.
But it doesn't, it doesn't discuss daycare centers.
I don't think it does, but it does, public and private.
So we're gonna wanna include daycare centers five hundred feet.
Licensed daycare.
Thank you, yes.
So I think if, if, is anybody opposed, I'll, I'll read this too. Uh, except this, the end, the end statement, I, I don't know about that. A public or private elementary school, middle school, secondary school, preparatory school. Licensed daycare center or any other facility with children commonly, uh. What's it saying here, see, this is the part I don't like, contradite and organize, ongoing, formal basis. So i- if, what, what is that referring to?
Well, that's why if we follow the state law, we just add in Granby's bylaw, the licensed daycare center from. Not allowed within five hundred feet. Or a retail marijuana establishment not allowed within five hundred feet of a licensed daycare center.
I think we should keep using the word commercial and not just retail. Because that'll include both medical and recreational. Because that way we can cover both.
Yeah.
If we just, because if we say the word retail, they're gonna team that with, um, recreational retail marijuana. Yeah, how, yeah, but I don't know, what, how's the law referred to as far as medical marijuana though? I thought that was a little different than rec- than recreational marijuana, where it can be sold, no? No, it doesn't, the only thing difference between recreational marijuana and a registered medical dispensary. Is you cannot ban a recreational medical dispensary in your town.
A recreational medical.
You may, I, a, a registered medical dispensary, you cannot ban that from your town. You can ban a recreational marijuana. But, but medical, you cannot ban it.
So there's, so there's basically four groups, or four, retail, medical, grown, and residential.
And it's been recommended that we don't. Address the retail and the, um. Medical separately, but together as commercial.
We shouldn't separate, we shouldn't separate it?
No.
Why?
Trying to figure out the best way to explain that.
We'll get back to it.
Okay.
What else we got?
So are, are we just, so as far as looking, as far as our bylaw, so. We're not looking to add in, uh, public, private elementary school, we're just gonna put in licensed daycare.
Yeah, if the state law doesn't cover it, then, then, if you feel that strong about it, then we should add that to ours.
I'm just, I, I, I'm just looking at the, the two that were proposed already, and they both have it worded in theirs. It's a little different, but it's both, you know, they talk about. Public or private elementary school, middle school, secondary school, preparatory school, licensed daycare center.
Yeah, I don't know what the licensing is, what the, what's the threshold that you need to be licensed?
Yeah, is it a license from the state or is it just a license, a DDA?
No, there's a license, to be licensed, you have to be licensed through the state. And you have to have so many courses. Right, there's a, there's certain requirements and stuff you have to have, it's certain, your house or your, your establishment must be, certain codes it must be.
Right, okay, so in other words, getting something from the town clerk is, I have a daycare center. That doesn't constitute a licensed daycare center.
You have a license as a business, they're not licensed.
A DDA or whatever.
As a business. What they do, what Kathy Kelly Regan explained to me, is the people that do have licensed daycare. Will bring in a copy of their updated license from the state. And give it to her, and then she will then update their business. That makes sense, Bob?
Yeah, so there's a layer of, uh.
Yes.
Gotcha.
Now, now, keep in mind. You guys are talking about keeping, keeping one of these facilities, a medical or a retail. I don't know if you can keep medical, but, but at least retail, five hundred feet away from a daycare. All right, so let's say one goes up, uh. Let's say across the street from Class Grass.
Okay.
And then somebody wants to put a house in. And then a couple of years later, they've got kids and they wanna put in a licensed daycare.
Uh, one of the towns, I'm not sure which one.
They can't do it.
Talks about pre-existing.
It was, it didn't mention that.
This isn't pre-existing, that's not what I'm talking about.
Right. But in other words, you can, you can't do it if there's a pre-existing facility. After that, if somebody wants to put one in, that's up to them, they already know that the.
Well, uh, wh- what's, what's in the state?
If there's a, if there's a, if there's a, a facility right there, a retail facility. And a couple of years later, someone builds a house or buys the house next to that facility, they cannot have a daycare center there.
That's correct. Because what the state says is whoever is basically there first. Whoever, whoever is there first.
By everywhere.
Right, whoever is there first. And they did their bylaws at that, at that point in time. It, it's just like changing a bylaw, say we have a recreational center or retailer out there today. They're governed by, well, I would say the two thousand eighteen bylaws. Uh, living, breathing. Right, but if we change the, uh, bylaws in two thousand nineteen, it doesn't affect the existing at all.
You know, I, I think.
No, to, to Jim's point, if we change the bylaws, that we're allowed to happen.
I'm just saying there's a flip side to it, that means nobody can put one there.
That's right.
Next to a, a, and of course, we're only talking one facility.
Yeah, well, right.
And if somebody wants, my personal feelings are, if you have an, uh. A, uh, dispense, a, uh, retail operation with marijuana. And you wanna have, and a house is next door and you wanna put a daycare center in. A retail marijuana place that is established or has been on the books, if you will. And you wanna put a daycare center in, have at it.
Well, I, I would say they'd have to refuse, the town would have to refuse the daycare license. No, it just not allow. Not allow. Not allow, so, it, so be it, I mean, if, if that one particular retail store ends up in that spot, well.
That's the way it goes, it'd be no different than the retail store saying, they just told me they're okay with it. It's not allowed, period. And, uh.
Interesting concept.
Uh, we're looking at two, and I like this too, the, the public library or playground or park, probably comes into play, but I do like that.
You, but, but the thing is. Library, at least.
But the public library is.
Immediate future, we're not, they're not even gonna get into this area.
Well, that's what I was gonna say, they're not. I like, I like the playground and park, and I don't think it even plays a factor either. But currently in the general business area and the overlay area for general business on New Leather Road, there are no parks, there are no ballfields. That's what I'm saying, so.
Again, I, I'm gonna go back to what I said before, let's say some property was donated. To the town and they wanted to put a park in, and there's a, they, they can't do it.
Yeah, there's such as, uh.
Unless the bylaws changed. No, if, if they're pre-existing, bylaws, changing. You can't, cause now if you say, you, you say, it can be, the park's not there yet, so now you're saying what, that the store can be within three hundred feet of a park. Now you can put the park in within three hundred feet. Don't allow it to be. The bylaw can change and then the person build a house, they could build a park. Just like, so as Jim said, I wanted to open a daycare and the marijuana dispenser is, you know, two hundred feet from my house. Well, I can petition that, I'd like to see someone change the bylaw to reflect a hundred and fifty feet, so I could open up a daycare. So now the bylaw is changed, at that point. Okay, if the bylaw is changed to allow coexistence, yes. But if the is not changed, then there is no coexistence.
Right, but everybody has the right to appeal any bylaw.
Right, right.
Petition the town to have it go to a town meeting. And. Vote on a change.
A hearing, then a meeting, yeah.
Yeah, so, and there's, there's ways that, you know.
There's, right, there's a procedure to be able to.
Okay, I just wanted to call it out so you guys were aware, five hundred feet, which, what, what that means on the, on the flip side.
And, and I think there is ways that they can, that that does happen down the road, and again. Again, we're talking about one particular retail.
We're gonna, we're gonna keep hearing stuff that, as it filters down through the, the grapevine. As other communities progress with this, that are, like East Hampton, I think it said something about they're, they're gonna allow up to six. Retail, you know?
Again, it's a different demographic, you know, it's population, I should say.
It is. So we'll just see what, what happens.
So we're okay.
We'll just adjust accordingly.
We're okay with that being a part of the public, uh, being part of the bylaw.
Right, we're gonna, we're gonna add licensed daycare.
But I think it, I, I would like it to be spelled right out.
Okay, all this.
Yeah.
Like Grafton has.
Kinda, kinda just, I put a quotation to it, so.
You won't see that, Glenn wants this.
Did not put in.
Actually, if I don't make it tomorrow night, why don't you take that with you?
Oh, you're gonna be there too?
Yeah, I have to be there for that.
He's part of the committee.
Committee.
I'm just gonna try and let it slide.
I'm gonna try it out, but.
Is there anything else we think we're, we're good? Well, that's why I was looking to see if you could adjourn the meeting and I could turn that off. I can, I'd love to, I mean, I'd love to, but is there a motion?
Yeah, I'll make a motion too, I think we're, we're all set, right, for tomorrow night's meeting to, to bring it up?
I think we've got enough to.
Should we have a motion that we agree on what we're gonna put in here, or?
Uh, you know, I, I was thinking that myself, Jay, however, these are not formal articles. And until the formal article is written.
There won't be a formal article until there's a hearing.
Right, but I mean, once it's formally written and everything, we're just kind of sitting here in general agreement. This is what we think, the ad hoc committee.
I don't wanna, I don't wanna vote on anything until after we have our hearing.
Right, put it all together, this is how it's gonna be presented.
We get feedback from the public and see what their thoughts are before we.
Okay.
Yeah.
Okay.
I would second Jim's motion.
All favor.
Hi.
Hi.